Good morning. Welcome to the April 25th Carroll County Commissioners Open Meeting. And as we always do, we will do the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, priority Carroll, I think we started on the right, so I think we start on the left.
Do you know your right and left?
It's fifty-fifty.
Left. Okay, just checking. Okay.
Are you done?
Almost.
I'm sorry.
Until I was rudely interrupted by our president, I let me share a couple of quick thoughts. First and foremost, happy Passover to those that are celebrating. You know, we have a few more days to go and life is good in that sense. Last night, had the opportunity to participate in a Freedoms Lions Club Veterans Appreciation Night. And they asked me to be an emcee, so it's always an honor and humbling to do that. We had about seventy-five folks and appreciate Commissioner Kyler and more importantly, his wife Rhonda attending, as well as the Secretary of our, now it's no longer the VA, it's the Maryland Veterans and-
Military Families.
And Military Family. Thank you very much. Which is pretty cool. You know, it may be harder to say and remember, but it's focusing on the inclusiveness of our veterans and the community surrounding around our veterans. We also had keynote speaker, First Sergeant Rozier, who spoke about his time in the Twenty-Ninth Infantry and the Guard. We had Deputy Secretary Bob Finn as well attend. And this one, to me, is very important. His name's Caleb, and I just can't remember his last name, but that's okay. He is the Executive Director of what's called Platoon Twenty-Two. Platoon Twenty-Two stood up a few years back, and I was at the groundbreaking for that. The number twenty-two is symbolic of the suicides that are recognized in our veteran community every day. They have taken that and expanded it to much more than just focusing on the behavioral health and issues about suicide, because suicide is not a cause, it's a symptom of a whole lot more. And he did a great job sharing that. I've been a part of this Platoon Twenty-Two for a while and an advocate for what we need to do. And those that know me, I've shared my stories as well. We were able to provide proceeds from the Lions Club that night to Platoon Twenty-Two and to Caleb. And I think almost, it was like nine hundred bucks or, yeah, it was nine hundred dollars we were able to provide. Just a great cause. Great guy. Believe it or not, he was a, well, he's always a Marine. He just lost all his hair on top and decided to put it down below his chin. But it was just a great night to be had. And the last thing about, you know, the Lions Club. It's just a great organization. It's a, we have, I don't know how many chapters in Carroll County, but there's a handful. And I've been a Lion for about ten years now, and I just enjoy every time to participate. We had about seventy-five there last night. And Mission Barbecue fed us and fed us well, so can't complain on that. And with that, that's all I have to want to share.
Thank you.
Mr. Vigliotti?
Thank you, Commissioner Rossin, Commissioner Kyler. I will join Commissioner Rossin in saying happy Passover to anybody who is celebrating. And I'm also going to be pretty brief this morning, so over the weekend, I had the opportunity to get out to Ballinger Park just north of Tawny Town for their Earth Day Cleanup, where I joined Parks and Rec Director Lorraine Vikari, Mayor Chris Miller, and two of his kids, among those who turned out to help clean up that particular park. Then I got over to Memorial Park to say hello to Councilwoman Judy Fuller and Parks and Rec Board members Kelly Bowie and Bill Kennedy, who are among those who also participate in the cleanup activities for the day at that park. This coming Saturday, the twenty-seventh, if anybody's interested, New Windsor Councilman Tom Guber Knight has shared with me that New Windsor is doing a town cleanup and beautification day from eight AM to noon, with everybody meeting at the New Windsor Town Hall at eight AM. It's my intent to be there to help out for at least part of that as well. And I bring these kinds of events up because they matter to our county environmentally and aesthetically, but also because the home we maintain is the home that we live in. And these are simple, easy ways to be a part of our community, and they really do make a difference. And they give us a hand directly in shaping the place that we call home. And that's all for me this morning.
Thank you. Commissioner Gordon?
Thank you. Good morning, Carroll County. Again, just reiterating both of my colleagues' comments this morning, just want to wish a happy Passover to all that celebrate. Also wanted to mention, we were not here formally in session yesterday, but yesterday was National Administrative Professionals' Day, so just wanted to thank everybody on staff and everybody throughout the community that are involved as administrative professionals. Obviously, we couldn't do it without those in this building and those in general that assist. So, and here we have Wanda from the Commissioner's Office, who Wanda's always got a great smile on her face and keeps a lot of things very organized and on top of things for us. So just absolutely incredible staff. There's Kathy as well from the Commissioner's Office. But just wanted to thank all of them for all their hard work and everything they do. And then secondly, I wanted to mention, just very briefly, it was, I believe, launched yesterday, the Carroll Linked Up Broadband Expansion Update. So the Long Driveway Program is now online. If you go to the county website for residents in Carroll County, you can get information as well as links and information to set up for that. There's funding assistance up to fourteen thousand dollars for qualifying homes with driveways longer than Internet service providers will connect for free. Definitely something very needed in Carroll County. Hopefully, and I think positively, this will make some headway and significant difference for everyone. So just wanted to mention that as well this morning, that is available. So for those in need of that assistance, I would suggest reaching out and getting on that as soon as possible. And that's all I have this morning. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Garan?
Good morning, Carroll County. Yeah, we missed Administrative Professionals' Day, and we're all lucky to have the staff that help us and to, I'm blessed to have Kathy Dietrich, who quite literally keeps me out of a lot of trouble. So thank you, Kathy, if you're listening. I had a somewhat of a busy weekend. On Saturday morning was the opening day of the Winfield Youth Softball Organization, which falls under the Winfield Rec Council. So to Buddy Brown and all the folks at the Winfield Rec Council, it was congratulations on the continued amazing work that you do for our region down there. Sheriff DeWes and I were there for the opening pitch, and it was a beautiful day. And again, to all the ladies teams that were out there for the tournament slash opening day, it was just a great event. So Saturday morning was the opening day for Winfield Youth Softball Organization. And then Sunday morning was quite a different event. It was the thirty-fourth Annual Memorial Service for Crime Victims and Their Families. This year, Carroll County had the, we hosted the Western Region Event, which encompasses the Western Counties. Thank you very much to Haven Schumaker and his staff for putting that together at the Winfield Fire Hall. Special thanks to Tim Weber, who we all know and love and does a great job over there. It was obviously a different kind of event. And again, the sheriff was there and a strong presence by his deputies. We read the names of every single, not me personally, but the name of every single victim was read. There was over five hundred names. Family members were there. And it was an important event to not only honor them, but then honor the families who were left behind, not just to grieve, but to pick up the pieces and to seek justice and to take care of family members and all these things that we couldn't possibly imagine, or I hope we don't have to imagine. There was a woman's sister there who was killed years ago here in Carroll County, and she gave such a moving speech. And then I had the opportunity to talk to some of the families that were there afterwards. And even after years, you could still see the pain on their face. So that was hosted again by our state's Attorney's Office, and it was amazing ceremony and well-attended. And, you know, I was honored just to be a really tiny piece of it. So that was my Commissioner Weekend on Saturday and Sunday. That's all for me.
Thank you. And before I do my priority Carroll, after we're done priority Carroll, the first item on the agenda is a public hearing. And you're welcome to call in, and you can do three minutes if you're in the room and want to talk for three minutes. Please fill out a card that's in the back and lay it there on the corner. Currently, we're without adult supervision and legal supervision, but they'll definitely be here before we do the public hearing. As I like to say, I love Carroll County, but I also love my family. My wife went to Denver to be part of Grandparents' Day at two of the grandchildren's school, Grayland School in Denver. We have two in Carroll County, two in North Carolina, and two in Colorado. And we try to get to see them as much as we can. And I'm sure everybody here is proud and happy with family. It's, for some reason, the good Lord bless us, and I'll take it. And Passover was mentioned. I got to be part of a Seder, and I guess I said that correctly, or I pronounced it. And I don't think I'm Jewish yet, but it was a nice evening and I learned a lot.
You're Jewish-ish.
And it was, it was, it was great. It was great. And great discussion. And I was in as soon as I knew it, it included at least four glasses of wine.
Oh, yeah.
So, so that was interesting. The budget, as everybody knows, the proposed budget's out. We did say it on Tuesday, and I'm glad some people were impatient, but we said it will be online tomorrow, and it will be. Ted is doing his library discussions with questions and answers for it. And those, those that are interested, it will be online tomorrow. Maybe late today, but we said tomorrow. I've been doing some meetings with constituents, and I encourage everybody to give me a call, give me an email. We've, we've gone from damn safety to a dog in the road, to other animals, and whatever it is, give us a holler. I'm actually working on getting a dumpster removed, which I'm not sure is part of our job, but it'll happen. So, yeah, please, please, please get ahold of us. The Veterans Dinner last night was great. Great people there. It's amazing that Secretary Woods, I think we've seen him more in Carroll County than we've seen him in Annapolis, and that's just awesome. The emcee, everybody said was great. I'm hearing impaired, so I'm not sure I heard much of it, but it was great. And then I just encourage everybody, we're getting to the time of voting, and pay attention, get out and vote. And it's, it's important. It's our right, and we need to do it. So I encourage for that. And now we're, we're gonna-
Kenny, just real quick, I think you enjoyed it because my ninety-two-year-old mother was keeping me in line the whole time, so. But I think she was also drinking quite a lot. It was, it was a good time.
And maybe it was the wine. She corrected him-
I know, very annoying.
-often. And at the end, I said, "How'd he do?" And she goes, "Well, he gets an A."
She thinks she knows what she's saying. But the one thing, the Veterans Celebration last night, we were very fortunate, and we're going to hear from Celine as well, but Celine Steckel and Gina Valentine, and the entire team that we have here in Carroll County and Carroll County Government does such a great job with the Veterans Advisory, with the VSOs. You know, it's a one-stop shop. You know, it's a hub. And the spokes are out there with a lot of the other nonprofits. But we are just so fortunate that we put our right foot forward. And I think that's what the Secretary saw and continues to see. And this administration, they just continue to highlight the value that we bring from Carroll County to Carroll Countyans. So, apologize, but yeah.
No, no, that's awesome. And, and now as part of priority Carroll, we're going to hear a little bit about the Veterans Celebration. And the only thing I'll say about it, because they're going to say everything, as soon as it's over, they start planning for next year. And it just seems like there's so much planning going into it, but guess what? It's here. It's, the planning's done hopefully, and we're moving forward. So please come up and give us, give us all the information.
Good morning to all of you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Put the thorn between the roses?
Absolutely. And if, and if I can, before we get started, you know, being on the school board, I would like to bring you some great news. Last night, we selected and announced our Teacher of the Year, which is Brian Thompson at Westminster Elementary. Jody Weaver, our Assistant Principal at Northwest Middle, was our Assistant Principal of the Year. And Tom Riddle of the Career and Tech Center was our Principal of the Year. So-
Congratulations to them.
-I want to share that great news with you on the, on the education side. Always love supporting and promoting our teachers.
Congratulations to them.
Okay, so we are, I'm joined here, obviously Steve Whistler wears many hats throughout Carroll County, and he's joining us today as one of our Veterans Advisory Council members, but also our Chair for the Planning Committee for the Veterans Celebration. And also Bobby Lawrence, who oversees our Veteran Services Program with Carroll County Government. She is our Aging and Disability Services Supervisor. So we thank you for the opportunity to come before you and talk a lot, a lot, I say, because this is a big event. We are super excited about it. Like you said, we've been planning for this. It's our third year with our annual Veterans Celebration of Carroll County. And any veterans, family members, anyone that knows a veteran, enjoys a veteran, is invited to attend this event. It is on May fifth at the Carroll County Farm Museum from noon until four. We have awesome things going on this year. We've really tried to make it even more family-friendly and engaging. We have a bounce house this year for children. We have free face painting. We have cornhole. We have the farm-friendly animals. Lots of things going on. But first and foremost, we are hosting this event as part of recognizing and celebrating veterans and- veterans and their families throughout. And we can't help to celebrate them with all of you being there to help us, to thank them for their service and the time and commitment that they put in. And it's not just about the veterans, it's about their family members as well. I'm going to turn it over to Steve Whistler to share some additional details about the event and the planning process.
Yeah, again, we, I was very fortunate to be nominated by our colleagues on the Veterans Advisory Council to, to serve as Chair for planning of this event. And I, first of all, I want to thank the Commissioners for devoting, you know, funds to have this every year. We did a really good job, in my opinion, of trying to raise additional funds to augment that. We raised, I think, 11,500 on top of the, I believe, 15,000 you allocated for the event. So we're going to have a great event for the public. We have many sponsors and I was really happy that we were able to secure the Country Current Band. You know, I'm a Navy retiree and reached out to Captain Collins there in the Pentagon and he was so nice enough to make sure that we were able to secure one of the best bluegrass, country bluegrass bands in the country. In fact, the bass player of Country Current is actually a Baltimore County resident. So it'd be nice to have somebody close to home playing and entertaining for us. So also Midnight Run is supposed to play as well. And we have lots of activities, as Celine mentioned, but the county departments are really coming together to make this a great event. Again, my hat's off to so many folks that spent, as Commissioner Kyler mentioned, almost an entire year planning the event. And it's something that I believe Commissioner Ed Rothstein really tried to jumpstart a few years ago. This is our third, third annual event. But it's really grown from that, from that initial start. We're still going to have the military hardware out there for folks. We're going to have games for the kids, adult beverages, even for those of those, you know, adults that want to come. And we're going to have a lot of veterans groups around the county that folks can come out, learn about and actually sign up and become a member. So you're American Legion, you're Veterans of Foreign War. So come out, learn about your benefits and I don't want to take all the information away, Bobby.
No, I'm thinking, what I want to say, I could just piggyback on you because that's the, I think the most important part of this is our Veteran Service Organization is the Resource Fair. And they get a lot of valuable information. Join some of the American Legions or VFWs, but then talk to our group and, you know, other groups about for what benefits and services and, you know, things that they were entitled. And I know that when I left this event the last couple of years, many individuals had thanked us for having it, just the fact that they had somewhere they can gather and be appreciated, you know, particularly our Vietnam vets. And, and we just always have gotten such great responses, such a good feeling part of the day. And I think every year it gets a little better, we're fine tuning, you know, what we really want this to be, you know? Part of like fun activities for our day, for our community, anyone welcome, but also those really valuable resources. We're going to have the Oriole bird, they're, I think it's fun, although I am a Phillies fanatic fan, but I'll be okay with the Orioles' bird as well. So I don't really have too much, I'm looking at the food list here if we were having, it's making me hungry for lunch already, so I'm just really looking forward to it. And I can't believe we're already here. I can't believe it's May 1st on Wednesday, so.
And you guys are going to get together and fill bags because each veteran gets a bag?
So this year, we decided, because many of the veterans are returning from years past, we will have bags available, but we won't hand them out to every veteran, but we will have them available. But we will be giving $5 coupons to all veterans so that they can either purchase a dessert or have a drink. And then also, we will be giving out the pins, our Veterans Celebration pins, to every veteran that comes in that would like one. And we're also having a recognition ceremony that begins at 1:00. That ceremony will highlight and celebrate veterans from the Iraqi era. You didn't have to serve in the war. If you served during that time, we are recognizing those veterans, so please make sure if you know someone that fits in that era, that they, they especially are coming to this event, they will receive a challenge coin as well. I have my challenge coin here. They will be given, as well as a certificate, and all of you will be there to thank them and have a picture opportunity as well. So please, make sure that folks are coming so they can be formally recognized. And there will be additional information shared there as well about activities for veterans, as well as initiatives with the M D V A. So we're excited about that piece.
And each year, I'm sorry, each year you focused on a group and, and Commissioner Rothstein was one of the spearheadedists. I think Commissioner Weaver carried him, but, and that was one of the focuses, is to try to attract young veterans to all the benefits they can get, because some of them are reluctant.
Absolutely.
Yeah, again, it is, the event is, I think, May 5th, right? From noon to 4:00. It's really important that the public come out, even if you're not a veteran, we really want you to come out, have a good day. And before we leave, we'd like a proclamation from all of you for good weather. There is no rain date, so we will have it rain or shine, but-
Well Gina, Gina promised us that already.
Okay, great, great.
She's listening. Now, you know, honestly, you can never say, "Welcome home" enough times toward Vietnam veterans and the importance of saying that and sharing that sentiment. The intent of this, exactly what Commissioner Kyler said, was to recognize all of those now that are 60 and below, you know, and can, to think about that, from Iraq onward. And to have them participate in the Legion, in VFW, in JWV, in all of the nonprofits that may be out there, but also to ensure that they understand what they are eligible to receive. And it's for them, it's for their family, it's for their wives or spouses, very, very important. And whether you think that you're not disabled or whatever, zero disability is a disability and everyone should be a part of the veterans' program and the VA. And that's kind of what this tries to highlight in a very serious way. Besides my big butt, there's a dog. So, okay, I'm going to get Mr. Swam on that one, but that's okay. So yeah, this was last year and the weather was perfect.
We've been very lucky the first two years, it was very good, yeah.
Commissioners?
Just had a, go ahead.
Please, Commissioner, go ahead.
Just wanted to follow up to one of the comments you had made earlier. Obviously you have the support of the county helping fund that and you mentioned you had a number of sponsors this year. I was just curious, given the number with, you know, what you were looking at, that you'd raise, is there, I mean, do you have a list that you could share with us this morning of who that all includes or?
No, I, I actually neglected in doing that. I know that Johns Hopkins, again, was a very big benefactor in supporting us. I can't remember any of the other big names.
Performance Food Groups.
We have some inside baseball on Johns Hopkins, so I feel comfortable with that.
Beg your pardon?
We have some inside baseball on Johns Hopkins, so I appreciate that.
Well, again, that's, that's who I'm affiliated with on my day job and, but they're a very, very big supporter.
And all the sponsors are listed on our dedicated Facebook page on the county website. I know that we had the Veterans Flyer on the screen earlier. There's a QR code on there. If you scan that, that will take you right to that, that webpage.
And again, I'd like to even consider the Navy being a sponsor. You know, the Country Current Band coming in free of charge, again, one of the best premier country bluegrass bands. It's come out for just that. I mean, they're, they're absolutely incredible. And I know that Commissioner Garen, you have military service, Commissioner Rothstein, obviously.
And Kyler.
Kenny also, Commissioner Kyler. But this is for everybody and I just, I can't tell you enough, on behalf of our committee, our Council, Veterans Advisory Council, the commitment that all of you have to our veterans is just incredible and, you know, we all appreciate that, you know? So from Bill Nash, our Chairman, we really appreciate your continued support. And on the fundraising side, we will try to continue raising more and more and more because eventually I would love to see a gradual handoff where we're doing this with community support rather than using, you know, taxpayer funds.
I apologize, Celine, go ahead.
I just wanted to say, and our, our largest sponsorship level is our stage banner sponsorship and the Veterans Independence Project, Johns Hopkins, and then also Performance Food Group are the three sponsors for the stage, the stage level. So we appreciate that. And then we also have, we're showing the rest of the, Chris has pulled it up on our screen to show the rest of the sponsors that are listed as well, that are different levels of sponsorship. So thank you to all of our sponsors as well.
And my goal was to match your 15,000, so listen, if you're listening, there's still time to contribute and help. Please contact Citizen Services or myself, but we would love to showcase your business, your group and, and help you show the community just how much you care about our veterans too.
And Mr. Whistler, to, you know, elaborate on something you said, for those of us who've never served, attending something like this is a very small way of demonstrating our respect and our gratitude. And then so, you know, again, everybody is welcome to attend this. And again, there is no, this is one of the best possible ways that you can demonstrate that respect and that support of our veteran community.
Thank you.
And truly appreciate all the hard work and dedication. I know that's going into this. I know Commissioner Kyler and I get to interact with the VAC, but I know there's a lot of moving parts behind the scenes, so I just want to say thank you to you and everybody else that's involved in making this, this day a great day, so.
Sure, well, again, the lion's share of the credit really goes to the staff. There are, there are, every, every planning meeting we have, we have at least 15, 20 people there. So it is a monumental effort and I'm really proud of the entire Carroll County team.
And like Commissioner Gordon said, we've seen some of it. Almost, you're very particular about all you do. I think there were 20 drafts of the flyer, maybe, you know? I mean, it's, it's, a lot goes into it and-
And I think I, I do want to say specifically, there are two other entities that we really need to recognize here that are not at the table. One is the team at the Farm Museum, because they are partners at the table in and out, because this is really a huge piece that we rely on them for the support, because they do this every weekend for events and they know what they're doing, so they're taking a big lead and role in this. And then also Chris Weinbrenner. When you talk about the behind the scenes and the flyers and the work that goes into that and the checking, she is instrumental and I want to say thank you, Chris. We appreciate everything you've done year over year for this event.
Absolutely.
And the last piece I do want to highlight, every year we have had a helicopter, a military helicopter come in for the event. And every year Larry Burbank, who is one of our Veterans Advisory Council members and just a wonderful support to our community and a veteran, he has been instrumental in getting that helicopter for us. And every year we request a Chinook and every year there is something that goes wrong where we can't get one and we got the call yesterday, we will be having a Blackhawk and not a Chinook, but I, I'm committed to one of these years, we will get the Chinook to fly in, so.
It's a big footprint.
And he was a fixed wing and a helicopter pilot, both, which I don't, you guys may know, maybe that's more common than you think, but I was, it's, he's, he's a pretty awesome gentleman.
He is.
And he is the, the poster child of volunteerism. I mean, he is everywhere. It's, it's amazing the amount of energy. The Blackhawk's pretty cool, Chinook's a big footprint, so I guess we have enough space there, but that's pretty cool though, having a Chinook, having a Blackhawk.
Now, do we want to do a photo with them or?
You do whatever you want.
Yeah, I think, I think so. I think, yes.
Yes, please, I can use that for promotion.
I should have said, you guys might do a photo with us.
I should have asked it that way.
Use my tie straight.
flotation residuals, DAF, and for a possible, possible moratorium.
Good morning Commissioners. As you stated, the purpose of today is to elicit public comment on a proposed moratorium regarding food processing residuals and, and/or DAF residuals. This proposed moratorium ordinance was advertised in the Carroll County Times on Thursday, April 11th and Thursday, April 8th, 2024. With us are, is Chris Hine, the Director of Planning, and Hannah Weber from the Planning Department. Would like to give you a very brief overview of what's being proposed.
And do we want to do at least part of the presentation before we do a public comment?
Yes, that, that would make sense.
Good morning to you both.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Okay, so as Mr. Burke stated, we have a brief presentation, kind of going over what DAF is and the current county regulations. So specifically dissolved air flotation, DAF, is an industrial process used to treat meat processing wastewater by removing suspended matters called residuals from liquid. DAF residuals are also referred to as food processing residuals. These residuals have some nutrient benefits and can be added to ag land as a soil amendment quality. And these soil amendments are an approved amendment by the State of Maryland. The application of DAF residuals is currently regulated by the state through nutrient management plans. As you all are aware, there was newly passed state legislation which establishes a permit process for applying DAF residuals or food processing residuals. This permit process is taking effect July 1, 2024. And currently, the storage of DAF residuals is regulated by the county. So some concerns have been raised regarding the land application of DAF residuals, particularly regarding the strong odors associated with spreading. These odors can be the result of storage and the spreading of DAF residuals. And there is also some environmental concerns due to nutrient runoff into local water systems. So looking at our zoning codes specifically, liquid or dry fertilizer storage is where this use falls under. If it is for personal use, if the storage is used for a personal use on owned or leased property, is an accessory use to farming practice and there is no restrictions. If the storage is being used on other farms that they do not own or lease, then it is a conditional use, which as we know, is subject to B Z A approval. There's currently one farm that has been found in violation of storing DAF residuals without the conditional use approval and the, they must cease operations or obtain approval by the B Z A. So that is it for my presentation. I'll turn it back over.
Quick question, and I don't know if you can answer this this morning. Could you go back to the last slide real quick? So you mentioned that there's one farm that's been in violation. Have they ceased operations or is this continuing at this point?
So to date, they have not applied to the B Z A and those, that 30 days has expired. So our zoning staff will go out and inspect to see if they are still using it. And if they are, then they would be in violation and we would be turning matters over to the county attorney's office.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, in the same line, because I was thinking the same thing. When did they, when did the 30 days end?
So 30 days from March 14th, so April 14th, so it has, it has expired.
So it's been about 10 days?
Yes.
Okay. And they were well aware that they had 30 days?
Yes.
So we're looking at storage because that's essentially all we're allowed to enforce and look at. And can you share who enforces the spreading and maybe contact information or whatever for people that, I think a lot of people think we should be doing something, but we can't, but who, who can?
Yes, so the Maryland Department of Agriculture is responsible through their Nutrient Management Plan Program and they're the ones who also will be given additional authority starting July 1 with the new permitting process. I do not have the information for the contact at M D A, but, in front of me, but certainly if anybody asks, I can provide that offline.
I'm ready to, personally, I'm ready to hear the, the public.
Do we have any callers?
We do not have any callers on the line, sir.
Do we have any cards?
No. First one is Kathy Green.
Deja vu here. Good morning. My name is Kathy Green. I live in District 1. Thank you for considering a moratorium on DAF storage. There is no legitimate reason, farming or otherwise, to store industrial waste in Carroll County. The material can be driven to the field and loaded in the spreader, as witnessed the last two years. On-site storage results in relentless odor, bugs, truck traffic, and in the case of leaks or spills, harms to the environment. Storage encourages bad behavior, as industry pays operators thousands of dollars to take the waste, rather than properly treat and dispose of the material per environmental regulations. Despite our pleas to the property owners, they are going to continue using the waste. Despite a history of noncompliance and the pending July 1 law, the MDA has approved the operator to begin spreading. Given his track record, I am confident our communities are in for a relentless onslaught of waste until the new regulations take effect and enforcement begins. The contents of each delivery is a mystery, and we have not been able to obtain the state chemical analysis. Studies of DAF have identified high levels of PFOS, nitrates, E. coli, coliform bacteria, nitrites, antibiotic-resistant bacteria, and ammonia. Regionally, homeowners in Antrim Township, Pennsylvania, have suffered irreparably damaged wells due to the same waste being trucked into Carroll County. That supplier, Jones Family Farms, was cited by the Department of Environment for contaminating those wells, along with the operator who applied and stored the waste. To my disbelief, Jones Family Farms has been approved by the MDA to continue operating in Carroll County ahead of the new regulations. I hope the new law provides relief, but I am not convinced our problems will be solved. If the regulations are written by July 1, time will be needed for the permitting process, and the operator has a history of noncompliance. We need your support. Please approve a moratorium to allow time for the new law to be fully implemented, and for a review of zoning regulations to address this public health issue. No one wants to live near a storage facility. Please consider the following zoning revisions for DAF as well. Prohibit storage, as the new law gives counties authority over storage. Prohibit distribution of the material. Route truck traffic off of our one-lane roads. And consider a ban on the import of the material. Why should Carroll County be a regional storage and dumping ground for industrial waste? To quote Antrim Township resident Ed Tracy, "We should have the right to work, play, or just enjoy being outdoors in our neighborhood without being exposed to bad air and bad water." Please vote for the moratorium and consider zoning changes to restore the quality of life that our citizens deserve. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Next is Jason Greer.
And you've done this before. You had four seconds left.
All right. First, just want to say thank you for placing this on the agenda and request your vote in favor of a moratorium. And while we hear a lot about the legislation, the legislation really does not do much as far as changing the current use of DAF. It really just authorizes MDA to begin to write some regulations. So really, the rubber's going to hit the road with the regulation that's written. So we do have some concerns with industry representatives having influence on that regulation. Obviously, MDA is a big supporter of agriculture, which we understand that. We're big supporters of agriculture, but we just are concerned that they may influence and limit the language within the regulation. We request that you remain engaged with MDA and the delegation regarding these concerns to ensure the proper protections are included in that regulation. So we hope that you continue to reach out to them to make sure our properties in Carroll County is protected. In closing, we're here in support of a moratorium, which will allow the county time to update zoning ordinances and understand the impacts of MDA regulations being written. I will say, I know typically your process is to leave the record open for 10 days, which puts this out another two weeks, based on your timing of open session. So I'd like to request that you maybe shorten that to seven days and put this on next week's agenda, if you could. So thank you very much.
Next is Thomas Fouts.
Good morning.
Thank you for having us. My name is Thomas Fouts. My wife and I live at 2613 Stone Road. Our property joins the farm property that has been spreading this liquid fertilizer hauled in by tankers from out of state, Virginia, I understand. We have lived on Stone Road since June of 1989, 35 years, which we've enjoyed immensely, except for the past two or three during the summer because of the odor. We've never smelled anything like that before, and hope it soon becomes no longer. The smell is disgusting. We can't have friends in. We have a pool. We have eight and a half acres. The smell is just terrible to sit outside. You can't have picnics. It's just unbearable. They mostly spread it at night. Just the situation of our home, we joined right to the farmer's property, and when they can spread that liquid, they come down the field right towards our house. Huge lights in it, lights up our bedroom at 1, 2, 3 o'clock in the morning, like it is right now in here. I have a friend in Mayberry, and I will back up to the beginning where we live. We have wonderful friends and neighbors all around us that we enjoy. But a friend in Mayberry has had major sinus problem, and my wife has sinus problem, which has led to sinus surgery, I think greatly related to this odor. We are both in our 80s, my wife and I, and are thinking about considering the possibility of selling and moving into a retirement home where we can get help as we need it. But who wants to buy a nice property that they can't go outside and sit by their pool and have picnics with friends and family because of the odor? I think that about sums up my, I did too what the two others said about the moratorium. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
James Belt.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thanks, as always I've said, for considering this issue. And I also would ask that you vote in favor of this moratorium. As a business owner here in Carroll County, I know how important it is to respect the community, to be a part of the community, and to take community into consideration in the way you approach your business and what you put down or put into the community. And in my experience, not taking that into consideration leads to further regulation that harms business. So even for farmers here in Carroll County, I think it's important to take into consideration the use of DAF and whether or not that might have a unnecessary and unintended consequence for farmers here in Carroll County. I'm very much in favor of agriculture and farming here in Carroll County. My dad is a farmer, and I appreciate all that farmers bring. But the use of this material, the dust clouds, it creates the potential for pollution in well water, and the concerns in the community just seem to make this unnecessary. There are other products that can be used and put down at a reasonable rate, reasonable cost to the farmer, and it's unnecessary to use this type of product, and certainly to store it on properties where you have concerns, already proven concerns in other communities where this has been used, that has caused significant issues. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Susan Belt.
Thank you so much for hearing us. I'll just say again, I live at 3164 Flickinger Road, which is on the corner of Stone and Flickinger, or right across the street from one of the big fields that he spreads the product on. And so, let's see. I'm in support of the moratorium on the storage of DAF, and I had hoped that somehow the county could have enacted a moratorium on the spreading of DAF as well, as we're hearing other people comment. We moved here almost 11 years ago to our little farm. We have beef cattle there, and have loved living here in a beautiful part of Carroll County with farming all around us. About three years ago, the farmer who rents the field across Stone Road from us started applying the material that we have come to know as DAF, or chicken processing residuals. I still remember the first time we smelled the stench, and I complained to my husband, and we both knew it wasn't cow or chicken manure. My husband was sympathetic to the farmer at that time, pointing out that the, I think it was the war in Ukraine, but something had made fertilizer prices very high. It seems that the first season, we were grossed out by the smell, and there were days we didn't want to go outside. But since that first season, it seems that the farmer has almost been using the fields as a dumping ground rather than as a farming field. Last year, from April through November, we saw many times in the same field, tractors spreading this stinky material, and wondered how the land could possibly absorb that much liquid material. We are now worried about the pollution to the waterways and our wells. We have had to deal with a much higher fly population in the area, as well as blowing dust from these fields. Are we breathing in this dust, and what effect will it have on us? We emailed and called the Maryland Department of Agriculture last summer to ask them to investigate, but at that time, there was only so much they could do, since the material is considered approved for use in agriculture. My husband is an agronomist and abides by a nutrient management plan by the Maryland Department of Agriculture. This farmer spreading the DAF must also abide by a nutrient management plan. The problem with this is that it is a self-reporting system, and this farmer could be lying about how much material he's putting down. I believe the recently passed state of Maryland legislation is helping to put more controls on this process, but because of this farmer's past practices, we worry that this problem will continue. I could go on and on about this, but I hope you've heard enough from us that you can make a decision to keep Carroll County from being a dumping ground for what seems like a material more suited to a landfill than to farm fields. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jennifer Belt.
Hello, my name's Jennifer Belt. I live on Stone Road. And my biggest issue with this product is how it will affect my children. It already affects their outside play. The best part of being a kid in the summertime is playing outside, and that's just gone. It doesn't happen anymore, because it's disgusting. There's no practicing T-ball. There's no swinging on the swing set. I've also talked to the Department of Agriculture, and they told me the product is being applied by digging it into the ground, putting the liquid product on, and then covering it back up. But essentially, what that does is creates a huge dust cloud that then blows onto my property. It's all over our outside dining table. There's no eating outside. It blows in my door, through the cracks of my door, and our house is brand new. So it just, you can't keep it out. We can't have our windows open in the summertime, and I'm concerned about my kids breathing this stuff in. You know, not too long ago, there were forest fires in Canada, and the air that was coming down was toxic. We were told to stay inside. I don't know what this stuff is that my kids are breathing in. It's hard to breathe, so it cannot be good for you, and there's no way to get away from it. So I don't know what to tell you. Please enact this, 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 or this is what should be done next. But I know that you are our elected officials here in Carroll County, so I'm trusting you guys with what the next step is to help better our lives and this situation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Randy Cole.
Hi, my name's Randy Cole. I live on Robert Arthur Road, neighbors of Jason, Susan, Peggy. And the only thing, I thank you very much for just listening to our problem, because it's been an unbelievable stench. And just like Commissioner Kyler, I love Carroll County. I moved here 45 years ago. Best thing I ever did in my life. I drove to Washington, DC for 31 years, back and forth, came home, was happy as I could be. And now that I've retired, it's no longer like that. Right this spring is a godsend, because the spreading has stopped. So as, without repeating everything they said, just thank you very much for even considering our situation, and confident that hopefully a positive outcome will come. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next is Brad Roderick.
Hi, Commissioners. Thank you. I promise not to be so fiery this time. Okay, I'll be a little less dramatic. Just a couple of things. You know, we're still concerned about what is coming down with MDA and what the regulations are on the application. We have not seen little, we've seen very little enforcement, and the response is always, call us if you see something. I would say there's probably been at least 50 phone calls and calls to various representative constituents, saying, please do something. And so, we are concerned. I understand that some things that we were concerned about, the trucking, the routes, some of that stuff's getting kind of pulled out by the industry insiders. So we're going to focus with you all on storage. I wish you could deal with application. I really wish that we could challenge that, but I'm not going to go there. On the storage side, I live on Humbert Schoolhouse Road. Thank you, Chris Hine and team, for responding to our pleas on Humbert Schoolhouse Road, and I appreciate your action. The storage facility is a repurposed manure, it was designed to store waste from onsite livestock. That's how it was set up, okay? It has no cover. If you go and drive by, you'll see stain lines to the, almost to the tippy top of the tank, okay? So what happens when it rains really hard? Hmm, you know, something there. The tank is situated right on B. Miller Road and Humbert Schoolhouse Road. I have pictures of the trucks blocking Humbert Schoolhouse Road and B. Miller. What happens if there's a fire? What happens if there's medical, this is a terrible place to have an industrial-scale level operation to be storing DAF. So we appreciate Chris and his team for recognizing that this wasn't onsite application. Only this was trucking it across state lines to Pennsylvania, spreading it all over the place. And we're talking hundreds, thousands of gallons, not just a couple of trucks. The tank is situated right downstream from a wetlands that feeds a stream that feeds my pond, feeds the downstream neighbor's pond, eventually feeds the Monocacy River, okay? When those trucks come in and out, you see DAF, I mean, Chris, you went out, they saw the material on the roads. If it rains, it just runs right on into the streams. This is not a good place to have a storage facility, even for onsite application. Really need these storage locations if DAF is going to be allowed to continue to be stored, to be specific for the use of that onsite application at that farm. We strongly encourage the moratorium. We strongly encourage your active involvement in shaping the legislation around how it's going to be permitted, focusing on storage. We need these storage facilities to be used for onsite application and not on an industrial scale, and to be actually designed for the purposes of DAF. So thank you so much for your time. We're in very strong support of the moratorium.
Thank you.
And the last speakers I have at the moment is Shannon Roderick. Yeah.
My name's Shannon Roderick. Our family lives, as my husband just said, kind of perpendicular to this storage site. We have three young children who have shared more their feelings about this when they're on the school bus, and kids like start dry heaving, or all, you know, it's not just a eww, it's everyone puts the windows up, kids feel sick. I have personally pulled over and gotten ill. It is that bad. This is not manure. We have more than two dozen cows. We've had them for 10 years. This is very different. As Jennifer shared, with our families and being outside, if, when this is stored and continuously being moved, the smell is increased. Just from the deliveries to and from, when it's spread, is understandably even worse. We've had to completely pivot family plans, birthday parties. We've had to completely pivot family plans, birthday parties. A lot of us grow our own food, and you could imagine just the thought of this material being in our soil, but also actually being outside and doing that. Also, the location of the storage facility, as Brad just said, I had shared some Google Earth images, they are close to a pond on the property where it's being stored, which feeds a creek, which feeds into a pond where we live. We do have dogs, we do have cows that have access to those waterways, that's very much a concern with this material. So we really hope there will be no more of this happening, obviously in our neighborhood, but also for neighbor, for owners in other areas where this could be happening too. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Burke, a point of order. So when we get done, we can make a motion to conclude the public hearing, keep it open for 10 days. We can make a motion to conclude the public hearing, period. And if we do that, we could immediately follow it with a motion to put in place the moratorium.
Yes.
Okay.
So, yeah, I'd like to start this off, because I do want to have discussion, but, you know, I think we're going to get unanimous thoughts on this. So move that the board does conclude the public hearing and conduct a moratorium concerning the storage of food processing residuals and/or whatever that is, DAF dissolved flotation residuals in Carroll County, to be in effect until December 31st, 2024. So this is effective immediately. Now...
Second.
That'd be my...
Are we okay that, just one motion?
Yes.
Yeah.
Commissioners? I do have another public commenter that just called in.
There is a caller.
There is a caller?
Yes.
We've still got a motion in a second.
Motion has been made, though.
We want to have the discussion.
I don't know how this works, do we suspend discussion in lieu of...
Yeah, yeah, yes, go ahead and do the caller.
Okay. Caller, if you could use star six to unmute, you'll have three minutes to comment on the public hearing for DAF moratorium. Caller.
Yes, can you hear me?
We can.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Yes, Catherine Adelaide commenting as a private citizen residing in Carroll County, and I was on the call earlier, called to let them know I was holding for this item, which I decided at the last minute, and then cut off, so I called back in. So thank you for taking the call. Yes to hearing the presentation before public comments, so that callers like myself, or anybody else that's on, can get up to speed quickly on certain topics. So I thought that, I guess President Kyler said that, hearing the presentation before public comments. Yes to, as a matter of caution, the noxious smell, I smell and excuse the pun, public nuisance and future cancer litigation, as with, they did with Roundup. Help the citizens file EPA complaints and other federal complaints, as well as the action they're taking here. I commend the citizens for coming in today, taking their time off of work, and family to come in and testify. And so also, yes, as a matter of local control, you have the authority, seems like you're going in that direction, and yes to the moratorium on the storage. And thank you for coming back and hearing my comment. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Now, we have a motion in a second, further discussion?
I'll just say that, you know, I want to thank everybody for coming to us with what are understandable concerns, and thank you for helping us to, you know, better understand the situation. I've, you know, again, as I've mentioned in the past, I've smelled it on more than one occasion myself, and I do not, cannot even begin to imagine how it is living next to this. You know, for me, this kind of thing always comes back down to, you know, kind of what Commissioner Kyler says, that, you know, we love this county, but does something like this fit in our county? And while the issue right now is centralized up in, you know, the northern part of the county, this has implications for the entire county. And so I ask myself, you know, does this fit with who we are as a county? And I say no, and that's why I support the moratorium.
So, yeah, just a quick comment. So, I mean, in terms of good government, and how quickly government can move, I think this is the best you could possibly have hoped for, and thank you for the staff for assisting with that. I only wish we could have done something sooner, or would have done something sooner, you could have enjoyed maybe, had an extra spring or summer in there, not being locked up in your homes. I'm not convinced that we can't do something about spreading, at least until the law's supposed to take effect, and I think that's an obvious concern, is that, I mean, when is it really going to take effect? And we can't expect them to have their act together on July 1st. So I'm not convinced we can't stop the spreading until at least the states get their act together on July 1st. I fully support the moratorium, and I don't, I think we should close, you know, we should close it and vote, but are we absolutely convinced we can't do anything at least until July 1st, technically?
The Maryland Department of Agriculture has, regulates the spreads of fertilizer, imposes nutrient management plans, soil amendments, they've occupied this area, and they've made no provision to allow local governments to enact their own versions of these laws, except to the extent of storage.
And we do have the ability, as shared earlier, to have a conversation with Department of Agriculture. We have his full attention next week, the Secretary himself. You're in contact with, the point of contact within the MDA regarding this specific, you know, situation, and I think providing that also on speed dial to others is going to be important. You know, I appreciate the legislation putting this in place, and I appreciate the law being put in place. It was, I think, going to be in October, and now it's in July, so that's a good thing for the beginning of fiscal year. And now it's our turn to ensure people are held accountable. I mean, the law's there, and we ensure people are held accountable to complying with that law. My question, more pragmatic, is this garbage that's stored, or this DAF that's stored right now, and we're putting this moratorium in place, effective today, how do they dispose of that right now, that's being contained? I mean, that, they've got to get rid of it somehow. So we have at least that to deal with, knowing that that's going to happen, but I mean, I think there's, you know, whoever this company or this guy is, has this DAF in place, and, you know, I'm just curious, how they, and how quickly. I mean, I don't know if we can do something about that, and saying, you know, get rid of this stuff, don't just keep it stored, I mean, it doesn't do them any good, but that's also a concern, you know?
Excellent question, I do not have an answer for you.
Yeah, I just, I'm just curious, because it's not about the DAF, it's about the odor, it's about the disgust of it all. So the quicker we can get rid of that, the better we are.
Does anything preclude us from amending the moratorium to order that any of this material that is currently being stored has to be removed and not applied?
I think that gets to the spreading issue again.
Yeah, I think so too. But I think getting them involved, having that conversation, to figure out time, expectation management for the community, hey, this will be left, the building, whatever, it is left to storage in this amount of time, I think is important, you know? So if we can follow up on that, I think that'd be important.
Certainly give that some thought.
Okay, thanks.
And I would, I would agree with you on bringing that up. I was kind of questioning that myself, I mean, obviously if it's blowing around or moving around due to weather affecting it, that's definitely not something anybody should have to be dealing with, whether it be residuals from this type of situation, or, you know, your neighbor having, I don't know, grass clippings. I mean, granted, extreme differences on the two, but clearly not something anybody should be interacting with, so appreciate you all looking into that and seeing what we can come up with, and that, and that part of it. I want to thank everybody for reaching out on this topic, I mean, obviously it is, it is significant, and obviously agriculture's a big part of our county, but that aside, what happens next to your property where you live or you work is significant in your lives, and I, I can't imagine having to have small particles blown under your doors and through your windows, and on your outdoor furniture, and, you know, affecting your lives, your kids' lives, and just everybody from that perspective. I mean, that to me is something that crosses a lot of areas we really shouldn't be allowing. I'm hopeful, which is not always a good way to play it, but I'm hopeful that maybe the state will see something effective come out of this, and maybe there'll be some additional modifications down the road, but clearly, I don't think there's a debate as to where this board stands, supporting this moratorium at this point, so I'm glad to see, this is, as Commissioner Garen said, us moving as, I think, as quickly in some cases as government does, and I really appreciate everybody coming in and bringing this to our attention.
Any more comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Now, yet, don't leave yet, so what happens with the moratorium now?
You're going to sign it? You're going to sign it later this morning, and it'll be in effect?
Immediately. And remind us what happens with the violation that he's used up his 30 days?
So our zoning inspector needs to go out and investigate to see if he is still storing materials for distribution, and if he is, then he would be in violation of both your moratorium and the notice of violation from the zoning administrator, and so we would turn that over to the county attorney's office to take further action.
So what's the possible further action? Can he be fined? Are you going to throw him in jail tomorrow, or what's going to happen?
We'll take a look at all of our options.
Okay. So Commissioners, if I may, one additional point of...
Probably not jail, though.
Okay. So as we've discussed, the state has this new legislation where they're going to be putting permits and, a permit process in place starting July 1. One of the aspects of that permit process is specifically referring to local jurisdictions and our ability to control the storage of this material. We would like to revisit what our current county code is, specific to the storage of this material, and put in place a text amendment to amend our code so that it's specific to this. We would like to have that in place by July 1, when the permit process begins. What that would mean is, we would need direction from you all to begin discussions with the Planning and Zoning Commission, because this is a land use change, to come up with that change, bring it back to you in June, so that you can go through this process of putting it in place. So if you're amenable, I'd ask permission for us to begin those discussions with Planning and Zoning Commission to adjust our text, our zoning text.
And I would remind you, that's the purpose of the moratorium, is to...
Yes, give them the time to do it, right.
So I assume no one's, is anybody opposed to that?
Do we need a motion for that, or?
I don't think so.
Just direction.
Just direction. I'm not opposed to it, so that would probably be moving towards a conditional use for storage, but I guess the problem is, what do we know, the technical specifications for storage? Do we even have those yet? I mean, it sounds like it's just more than throwing it in an open pit or a big vat, so do we even, can we move forward with the conditional use if we don't exactly know the technical specs?
So that's what we would be looking into, is what are all of the requirements around the permissible use of storing this material? Does it need to be enclosed? Do we prohibit it completely? Those are the options that we would be looking at and discussing with Planning and Zoning Commission, and coming back to you all for discussion and amendment.
Great, yeah, let's do it.
I think it'd be advisable to do that, as soon as we could.
And to make it as restrictive as humanly possible that we can.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, just, again, follow up on the stuff that's there now, on its disposal.
Yep.
So I think would be important, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, folks.
Item two. And thank you for the very positive and, and concerned comments. Item two, a briefing and a request for a public hearing on 2024 Spring Amendment to Water and Sewer Master Plan.
Good morning to both of you.
Good morning. I'm here with Price Wagner, who is our Water and Sewer Planner in the Department of Planning and Land Management. As you may know, we make amendments to the Water and Sewer Master Plan twice a year, once in the spring, once in the fall, and we batch all of these together for both the county and the municipal system. So Price is going to give you an overview of the spring amendments, and requests that we move to a public hearing so that these can be vetted, and then hopefully with a recommendation to amend the plan and send that to MDE for their approval. Price?
Thank you, Daphne. Good morning.
Good morning.
Yeah, so as Daphne said, we are in the process of amending the Water and Sewer Master Plan, which was adopted by this board last year. So why are we doing this? The main reason is to keep the plan as current as possible, and to address and implement updates. This plan isn't, is eligible for amendments twice during the, or every, or more than twice during the two years between the Triloneal Updates. Those occur during the spring and the fall. And just as a reminder, for a project to be permitted by the Maryland Department of the Environment, it must be listed in the Water and Sewer Master Plan. So where are we now? All municipal planning commissions have certified their portions of the plan as consistent with their comprehensive plans, and on April 16th, our county commission, sorry, our planning commission certified consistent with our applicable plans. And today, I am briefing you on this. So what are we looking at? There are water service area amendments for the Town of Mount Airy, City of Westminster, and Freedom, and then sewer service area amendments for the City of Westminster, Town of Hampstead, and the Freedom area. First off, this is the Town of Mount Airy. This is the Twin Arch Mobile Home Park, which has been tested, it has very high levels of PFOS, and even those not within the town limits, MDE has requested that this, that the town bring this portion in, online, and connect to the public water service area. This will add approximately 5,000 gallons to the existing final planning area, and there is no aspect of this coming into the town limits, however, the town has no issue with them being put on the public system. For the City of Westminster, the next, these two slides are of the same property. For the water side, just adding these two parcels, parcel 33 and 1648, to the water, priority of water service area. This will add roughly 4,500 gallons to the priority planning area of the projected water supply and projected capacities table. These two properties were owned and known as the Dole Property previously, they have since been sold and purchased, and they're looking to develop these two properties. Again, this is also same thing for the sewer side. For sewer, the connections would be down Kent Terrace, potentially, and then through easements, through the Stonegate subdivision. Again, this is also roughly 4,500 gallons coming into the sewer, the sewer service area for the City of Westminster. The Town of Hampstead, this is known as the Michaels Property, right below the former North Carroll High School, or now known as the Pantherplex. This is to, this property currently is in the future service area, the developer's looking to move that into the priority service area, so they are able to begin the process of developing this into roughly 45 homes total. This is to move 10,000 gallons, or 40 for 40 units. There's a small strip, it's probably hard to see, right along Panther Drive, that is currently in the existing service area. That accounts for five homes, so that gives you the total of 45 homes they're looking to do. And the last ones are in the Freedom Water Service Area, and there's trouble for the Freedom Sewer Service. This is the Schoolhouse Overlook Property, they are looking to come out of the projected water service area. They have gone through the process and realized that their property is susceptible, and has very good conditions for wells, so they like to, to develop this property on, on private well. And this bottom portion right down here is part of the Zable Property. This is the portion that is in the conservation zone, so they would like to remove this portion from the water service... zone. So they would like to remove this portion from the water service area, as well as the sewer service area, so they can develop that on private well and subject. Again, that's just showing them a little bit closer, zoom in, of the Freedom, for the Freedom Service Area pertaining to the Zable Property, and the five homes that'll go, potentially go into this area right here.
The rest of the Zable Property is in-
Correct. Is in, and will stay in, the water.
And will stay in.
Yes, correct.
One more time, the light blue and the dark blue?
Light blue is currently known as future service.
Right.
The dark blue is existing, and then the medium blue, if you want to get that in depth, is priority zero to six years. So they can connect within zero to six years.
Okay, I'm, I guess, well, I'm not sure which one then is medium. So the Zable Property is medium blue?
Correct. Yes, the Zable Property is medium blue.
I just saw light blue, just, I got it. Okay, thanks.
So this is just to show on the tables that are updated. So the Freedom-Sikesville demand tables, the Mount Airy demand table, and the Westminster demand table for water. And the same for the sewer tables, so Freedom, Hampstead, and Westminster. So how are these amendments consistent with the Carroll County Master Plan? Water supplies, and to serve current and planned development, facilitate development pattern that remains consistent with the overall fabric of our communities, and of course pursue policies that facilitate development in appropriate areas, mainly growth areas, priority funding areas, and areas that currently have facilities, or have the ability to have the facilities as needed. So we're looking here today for a request for a public hearing on May the 16th, with a potential adoption on May the 30th. And then following the, the adoption, we will forward this to MDE for final approval. And the amendment does not go into effect until we receive the final approval from the Maryland Department of the Environment.
Motion to proceed with the public hearing for the 2024 Spring Amendment to the Carroll County Water and Sewer Master Plan.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any questions or discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Next, we're gonna look at a contract award for the 2024 Hot Mix Asphalt Paving, which, there's another one being bid, so this is, this is the first.
Harry, congratulations-
Thank you very much.
On the promotion elevation, what's the, what's the right word for it?
We'll say promotion. But thank you very much. I'm excited.
You're very welcome.
I'm excited about the position. And I told my husband, I said, I'm gonna go in and give it, give it all, give it my best. And, you know, hopefully it's satisfactory to everyone, and, and I do a good job, and, and really, you know, put as much into the county and, and serving the county as Maureen did. I know it's big shoes to fill, but I'm gonna give it my best.
Absolutely.
Awesome.
So I appreciate it. Thank you.
You're very welcome.
The Office of Procurement and Cooperation with the Bureau of Engineering requests your approval to award a contract for the 2024 Hot Mix Asphalt Paving I to MT Laney Company Incorporated of Eldersburg, Maryland, in the amount of $4,862,051.63. This work consists of paving approximately 20.24 miles on 18 county roadways. This amount is within the adopted budget.
As was stated, we're here to seek your concurrence to award our pavement preservation one contract for FY '24 to MT Laney. The list, the list of road, the 18 roadways is in your briefing paper, if you want to, just to view those, is 20.24 miles. The work will include repairing and preserving our aging infrastructure, full deff reclamation, milling of pavement, placement of hot mix, and surface courses, installing inlets, and storm drain pipes, rebuilding and adjusting inlets, shoulder backup, main sub-traffic, and other incidental items. It includes 120 working days. MT Laney has completed this type of work for us in the past, and we hope to get this project started as soon as possible. We are just starting our pavement, or our pipe replacement project, which we'd like to get those pipes replaced before we start paving the roads. So that pipe work starts on Monday, and then this will follow after that. And Commissioner Kyler, to your question, yes, we do have a second contract, which we are working to get out. We've had some staff, staffing shortages, so that's a little behind right now.
So soon to be advertised?
As soon as the staff can get it out.
So is it fair to say sometime this summer?
For this work, we hope sometime between June and, and October. The contractor, once we get started, will give us a schedule, tell us which roads, when they plan. We, we generally don't tell them which roads to start with, and which ones they can do when. It's means and methods they have. They bid it, so they know where they can start and where they can end, and, and most efficient work for them.
And, and that kind of leads to a question. There, there's been times over the years the pipe and the paving were in the same contract, and there's times it was separated. Is the, is the mindset that separating gets us a better deal on the two bids, because it loses some coordination? If, if the same person had both, they could pipe the roads they want to pave?
Yeah. Our hope would be is that we do the pipes a year ahead of time, let them sit and settle, and then we don't have any of those settling issues. We're not there yet. We had plans during, prior to COVID to do that, and COVID got us behind, and we're continuing to be behind. So our goal is to get those out the year before, if we could.
Yeah. And I don't know if we have any of those, like Baltimore County, you're not allowed to pave for 90 days, I think it is, after a pipe's put in. But a year would be awesome.
We have not had a lot of issues, but every once in a while, we do have some compaction issues.
Motion to award the contract for 2024 Hot Mix Asphalt Paving I to MT Laney Company Incorporated, the amount of $4,862,051.63.
Second. Any more discussion or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Two close bids.
They were close.
They were close. Now, we're gonna talk about a grant repurposed for the 2009 American Recovery and Reinvestment Act, Energy Efficient, Efficiency Block Grant. I'll tell you, I'm being challenged.
That's why we speak in acronyms. It's easier sometimes, right? Good morning, Commissioners. Debbie Stanford, grants manager, here with Dean Leister, Bureau Chief of Building Construction.
Morning to both of you.
Morning.
So the, the purpose of this request is to repurpose some grant funds that we were awarded in 2009 under our funding. Part of that money went into a revolving loan fund that county residents could tap into to do energy projects in their home. The loan fund has been rarely used, once in the last five years. So both staff and, we've talked to the Department of Energy, about repurposing these funds into a different project that we can spend down. So staff recommends that we put them into the Family Shelter Cove Project, because there are going to be other federal funds in that project with all the associated requirements for procurement, Davis Bacon, those kinds of things. So that's what we're asking your permission to do today, and it will require a resolution to move the funds from the grant fund into the capital fund.
It's a great idea. I appreciate that. I mean, to-
Want to use them, and, and they've been sitting, so.
To, to move it into, move it into something like the Cove, I mean, just makes sense. So I appreciate that. I'm with the Board. Commissioners approve resolution CTAC 24.04 to transfer EEBG funds of $261,707.54, serious, from the grant funds to Cove Capital Project.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Quick question I did want to ask. Is there any other additional funds outside of the 261,000 still withstanding, or is that pretty much utilize all of those available funds?
It'll use, utilize everything that we have remaining in that project, yes. Yeah, every other, all the other projects were one and done. Like, you know, we built a building, we built a transit building. Like, we did much with that money, but it was all, you know, during that period. This is the only money that remains, since it was that revolving loan fund.
Okay. Thank you.
And there are no outstanding loans. They've all been paid back.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you both.
Now, we're gonna talk about chip seal surface treatment.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning, Brown. How are you doing?
Okay.
Good morning, sir.
Thank you.
List of roads.
Thank you, Doug.
Don't give him one.
Mr. Rothstein, are you, are you gonna, like, want to pull out Weaver Lane, or you're okay with that being in there?
I don't like that, man. It was built in, what, 1794?
I'm sorry, go ahead, please.
I just got a quick question for you. The first one that I have that is for Slurry Pavers, is that right with y'all too, or is it for American Paving?
I think it's the American Paving.
Chip seal one first?
Okay. It threw me off with the times. I can go with this one, then. The Office of Procurement in Cooperation with the Bureau of Roads Operations requests your approval to use American Paving Fabrics Incorporated to perform a chip seal surface treatment on 13 county roads of approximately 18.98 miles at a cost of $720,768.45. This cost includes material maintenance of traffic and a 3% contingency fuel index inflation. The service is being purchased via Howard County contract, which was competitively bid. The amount is within the approved budget, and no additional fund should be necessary.
Good morning, Commissioners. We've been chip sealing through the, with the pavement preservation project probably since about seven, 2017, with a couple test roads in 2015. We've been using American Paving as our chip seal preservation company. They do a great job. The roads on the list this year are Angel Road, Frizzleburg Road, Hagerstown Lane, Richardson, Brule Heart Mill, Black Rock, Eckerd, Huffmanville, Tank Road, Bear Branch Road, John Pickett, Muller, and Stony Lane. And the handout that Doug just handed to you showed which Commissioner District each road is in. The process is a layer of emulsion with some number seven or eight chip stones to fill in the larger cracks, and then they go over it with a fog seal. And it takes approximately, it's a very fast process. Traffic can, can travel these roads without being closed down. And the whole process takes about four to five days. From the time they start, they get the chips down, they sweep it, then they do the fog seal. Any questions?
How long does it last?
We estimate that with chip sealing, they should gain another six to seven years on the roads.
Okay. And, and whose choice is it, whether it's number sevens or number eights? A contractor's choice, your guys' choice?
It's the contractor's choice. They ride all of the roads, and they get a feel for what they each need. So it will be the contractor's decision as to which, which stone he chooses to use.
And it's interesting, I guess, tell me if this is typical, this is, what, 19 miles? The paving bid was 20. Paving bid was almost 5 million. This is less than a million, which is why you do this.
Right. That is correct. We have, we have a step. Once engineering paves, we try to come in about six years behind that and do the micro, the slurry seal, which is the next item. Six years after that, we come in and do the chip seal process. So then it buys it almost 18 years. So then you're into 24 years before you have to replace a road. That's our plan.
Commissioners?
Motion to approve the chip seal surface treatment by American Paving Fabrics Incorporated in the amount of $720,768.45.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Now, Slurry Pavers.
All right. The Office of Procurement in Cooperation with the Bureau of Roads Operations requests your approval to use Slurry Pavers Incorporated to perform a micro-surfacing on four county roads of approximately 5.49 miles at a cost of $213,494.36. This cost includes material maintenance of traffic and a 3% contingency fuel index inflation. The service is being purchased via Howard County contract that was competitively bid. This amount is within the approved budget, and no additional fund should be necessary.
Okay. So the difference between the micro-surfacing and the chip seal, and the micro-surfacing is, is a, is a thinner emulsion, and it, it's more of a grit, like a sandy emulsion, that goes over top of the roads. And we tend to do this on the first go-round of a pavement preservation process. And the roads on the list for the micro-seal this year would be Bixler's Church, Trenton Mill, Weaver Lane, and Nicodemus Road East. And once again, they are listed on the pavement preservation list by the district.
And both of these, you piggybacked the Howard County bid. Does that save us money, time, or both?
Motion to approve the micro-surfacing road treatment by Slurry Pavers Incorporated in the amount of $213,494.36.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any further questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Kathy, you did get my note about-
I did, thank you.
Signs. Absolutely. It's always fun to, to attend the Eagle Scout Courts of Honor, and knowing that that project was making a difference, you and the entire team, along with the Gambor folks, you know, was, was pretty special. And just for the good of the community, it was a Eagle Scout, really cool kid from Liberty High School, that his project was to put signs in place on Liberty Reservoir for safety, to ensure that the Gambor Fire Department had the ability to better locate individuals that were in need. And it was replacing old, broken-down signs. And they reached out to Gambor on the, on the need. He came up with a solution, and part of that solution was working with you and the team in fabricating the signs, and gave them a place. So, thank you.
You're welcome. It was our pleasure.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Any further callers?
Yes, sir. We have a caller online. If you could please use star six to unmute for general public comment. You'll have three minutes. Please identify yourself.
Yes, good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. Catherine Adelaide, wearing a different hat, Carroll County Republican Central Committee. I do appreciate everybody remembering Passover holiday. I ran out of time to wish everybody a happy Passover. My family celebrated Passover since we were children growing up in Montgomery County. We always watched the Ten Commandments and eat the muffin ball soup. I think everybody could benefit from a review of the Ten Commandments these days. Our country is founded on the Judeo-Christian Bible, Old Testament, and New Testament. So I appreciate you mentioning that again today. I want to start with committee news. Our monthly meeting is tonight at 6:30 at the Senior Center. And the first thing we're going to be doing is swearing in our newest appointed committee member, Mercedes Mobus. There were cupcakes, so if you want to stop by, it's gonna happen right at the beginning. So stop in, say hello, grab a cupcake. And I know you're very busy, but appreciate your good wishes. Secondly, the MDGOP Spring Convention is coming up May 17th and 18th in Hagerstown. Friday night is free. It's a networking time. It's a great time to meet other Republicans, so you're invited to that. We'll be talking about election integrity at the committee tonight, including our carnival season is coming up. We'll have our trailer out and officially selling, you know, Trump signs. So we hope you'll get your Trump sign. As the Election Integrity Chair Subcommittee, just overall, what we're watching for, especially with mail-in ballots, is this chain of custody. And what that means is, whenever human hands are touching ballot, we ask the question, are there always two watchers of the opposite party, Republican, Democrat? They use, include independents now. Are they watching that process? And we're looking for breaks in the chain of custody, and we're documenting that. Overall, I'm watching three big areas. The post office, which nobody knows what's going on at the post office, but my real focus is our local Carroll County Board of Elections, which- which, I'll talk more about that in a minute, and the State Board of Elections, there's another citizen group, and the MDGOP have filed several lawsuits, one on the voter role integrity, that is getting some traction now, because, you know, we've got problems with the voter role, a second lawsuit is about, you had to take an oath and swear that you wouldn't use voter information for election integrity, so that's being challenged as well. I attended the logic and accuracy demonstration on April 19th, I was the only person from the public there, I did canvassing for six hours on Monday, April 22nd, I want to thank Sally Taylor, President of South Carroll Republican Club, who, who was there for several hours, Robin Fraser from the Subcommittee, and an unknown woman who did show up, there was just three of us. Early voting begins one week from today, and I will send you my recreational pot update by email, thank you.
Those are the other, only comments I have, sir.
Thank you. Admin session open, any comments, any Commissioners have anything on their minds? I guess we're ready for agenda.
Good morning.
Good morning, Wanda, how are you?
Did you see your picture in, in priority, Carroll?
No, I didn't.
You put that up.
Yes, Chris Swam put that up.
Oh, Chris, it's Chris's fault.
National Admin Day.
So if you're happy, we did it, if you aren't happy, it's Chris.
Exactly.
We got 27 callers of appreciation, so you must be doing something right.
Okay, agenda, Monday is Taste of Carroll, and I'm going there. Tuesday shows open, Wednesday is Secretary Addicks, first at Constock, the Mountain Growers, then Luncheon Roundtable.
Would you, Wanda, would you add me to the Luncheon and Roundtable, please?
You can add me as well to that.
Okay.
Thank you.
And then, 3:30, Secretary, Secretary Addicks at Shamrock Farm, and I thought, in the morning, they were also going to Bullock's, can, can you check that and, and see if there's one, I, I thought there was one more place.
I think there is, I think that's where they're starting.
Okay, maybe that's the earliest one, I, yeah, I, I thought, I thought they went to Bullock's.
Yeah, I think so, I think so.
And, and I'm going, I'm planning to go to all of it, and Commissioner Rothstein,
and you, you just added to the Roundtable.
And Commissioner Gordon, too.
And Commissioner Gordon.
Yeah, and, and Ms. Hill, I'm gonna, I don't know what, you'll have to fill me in, Commissioner Kyler, on what's going on at Shamrock Farm, but I'd like to attend that.
Yeah, he, he's essentially doing a tour.
Good, okay, that's an excellent place to do it, all right. Could you add me, please?
Yes.
In your neck of the woods.
Yeah, and, and quite frankly, a farm that I've always wanted to take a look at, because it's.
It's beautiful.
It's beautiful.
Me. Okay, 4:00 PM, Board of Education Operating Budget Work Session, and shows none of us, 4:30 Drug Court Graduation, shows Commissioners Kyler and Rothstein, and depending on how beautiful Shamrock is, I, that'll, that'll be tight for me, but that's my plan. Thursday, 7:00 AM, the Annual Sheriff's Prayer Breakfast, and that shows all of us going. 8:00 AM, Closed Admin.
Yeah, we'll move that.
9:00 AM, our Open Meeting.
That'll be moved.
I'm sorry.
Sorry, that'll be moved.
We're gonna shift, we're gonna shift it later.
You'll be in time for, you'll be in time for open session.
Oh, oh, yeah, 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 it's, you and the sheriff are closely together to make sure we meet our schedule, thank you. Item one, approval to submit application, accept award. Item two, preapproval to develop application and schedule a public hearing. Item three, approval to submit Homeless and Solutions Program Grant, application and accept the award. Item four, construction inspection services for stream location. It's a contract award. Item five, approval to purchase repair to vehicles, public comment, open admin, agenda review, Boys and Girls Club Youth of the Year Ceremony at Scott Theater, Commissioner Kyler and Rothstein. Friday, May 3rd, ribbon cutting, haircuttery, Baltimore Boulevard. Sunday, it shows that Commissioner Garren's doing the podcast. At noon, Veterans Celebration, and all of us will be there, and it'll be a great afternoon. On the next, second week, Monday, May 6th, Public Hearing on Proposed Budget Streaming, Carroll Arts Center in Westminster, Commissioners Gordon, Garren, Kyler, Rothstein, and Vigliotti. Tuesday, May 7th, well, let me back up, and, and I just, I just want to say it again, we, we encourage everyone to come on May 6th, and, and please comment, and I'm sure there be some people outside also, and hopefully, if, if you feel the need to assemble outside, please do it respectfully and peacefully. Tuesday, May 7th, Commissioner Gordon's Chamber of Commerce Breakfast, Commissioner Gordon will be there, Kyler and Rothstein. Career and Tech Education Signing Day, Commissioner Kyler, and because of who he is, I think, that same evening, I think, at the FOP, and it shouldn't be on here, at the FOP, David Smith is going to be here speaking about bias in the media, and so I just think that's, that, that's going to be an interesting talk. Wednesday, May 8th, Opioid Prevention Coalition Meeting, Commissioner Kyler. Farm Museum Board Meeting, Commissioner Vigliotti, Board of Ed, Board Meeting at 5:00, and shows no one. On Thursday, 8:00 AM, Closed Admin, 9:00 AM, Open Meeting, and National Foster Care Month will be mentioned, and item one, option to purchase a conservation easement. Item two, approval to transfer annual housing bond allocation. Item three, Community Reinvestment and Repair Fund in Eligible Uses. Item four, applications for the Bureau Aging and Disabilities for an Area Plan Individual Grant Application. Item five, option to purchase an easement on the H-Wang Sigmund, Larry Sigmund, and Jeffrey Sigmund Critical Farms Program, public comment, agenda review, and that week, it's Commissioner Rothstein's podcast.
Is there a reason why we're splitting up these purchases of easements, I mean, we got one in the morning, I mean, we got one first item, and then one the fifth item?
I'm sorry, I.
I'm talking about the purchases of these easements, you got one first item and one fifth item, why not just make them one, two, or five?
You're saying.
I, I don't know, just for, for easement of.
Saying, do them back to back.
Yeah.
Usually we do, so maybe they requested something otherwise.
I, I don't know.
So you don't.
Wanda will take care of it.
You don't want to see JP Smith first and last.
No, I'd rather just take it, take him one big pill.
And get it.
Yeah, I, like you say, unless they had a reason, then.
We usually try to lump people together that way, for their convenience.
Any other, any other comments, changes, motions to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.